We do. Okay, great.
I was gonna take that.
Okay. So we do have audio back at this point? Awesome. Thank you so much. Apologize for the inconvenience here. So we have done a roll call vote to come into the open the public meeting. Superintendent Strauss's leadership team is here. We have publicly welcomed Bryna Donahue for stepping up in a recent resignation. We have asked if anyone is recording the meeting. Nobody is at this point. However, Lakeham is with audio at this point. So that would take us to agenda item number four, which is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Agenda item number five. Do we have any student presentations to the school committee tonight, Superintendent Strauss?
We don't, but I do want to reiterate that we are bringing back what we started last year, which was each school will be doing a presentation. We are also gonna have seniors from Ponacquid come in and do some of their things, but I think it's important that every school and I think school committee meetings were much more alive when this students came. So we will start that in September.
Yeah, they brought a ton of joy. So excited to see what they bring this year. Thank you for that. Number six, superintendent updates.
So welcome back, everybody. Number of things that I'd like to go over. Class size list you have. Enrollments are still coming in, but in general you have all the class sizes. Bus routes were posted today at all the schools as well as on our website. So I'd like to thank Kenny Resendez and his team. I also wanna commend First Student and Kenny in particular, as well as all the drivers. Every year, the bus company, every bus company in the country through First Student is ranked based upon a number of criteria. This year, our bus company was ranked 13th in the nation, which is pretty impressive. So the last two years, we've been 12th and 13th. So that's a number of factors, including speed, braking distance, all those kinds of things. So that's a real positive. Although everything is important, I think this is one that we are all excited about. The vestibule project is now complete. The three campus schools are the second vestibule, as we said, the second set of doors now have locks on them, panic bars, all of those things. Cameras have been installed, fobs have been installed. Greg is here. I wanna thank him and for all the work that he's done. AES is not complete. It was not going to be complete until the project is done. So I wanna reiterate that again. AES is not done until the doors and windows are done. Once that is done, then all of the buildings, FES is already complete. So we're excited about that. New staff begin on Monday and Tuesday. We have 25 new employees, including Perez, lunch and recess monitors, an adjustment counselor at the high school, a Portuguese teacher, literacy specialist, a K3 certified Orton-Gillingham teacher, which is a big win for us. That's gonna be a massive win. That teacher will be splitting time between AES and FES, computer tech, as well as a number of other teachers. All students other than kindergarten begin on September 5th. Kindergarten begins September 7th. We do have a couple of other positions, forgive me, that are still open, that we are in the process of interviewing for, and hopefully those will be filled in the next few days. That is not unusual at the end of the year. The fact that it's only a few is a positive. We started this early and we got some really good candidates. We're really excited. Some summer updates. AES, and I understand that there's been a lot of conversation about AES and the AES project. Let me kinda update everybody. Greg is here. If you wanna step up and say a few words as well, in case I miss anything. I think it's important for all of our Assawamset families who are involved in the before and after care program that there has been a shift. There has to be, because the building is not open in the afternoon. So we went through a lot of scenarios, including bringing the kids back to Grays. What we are doing is this. The before-school program will remain at Assawamset. So that makes it as easy as possible for parents. The after-school program students will be transported to Grays, and parents will be picking up their kids at Grays. We have done this in the past, from what I understand, when it was at the middle school, and so it's not a huge shift. And this will take place until probably, we believe, October 30th. We believe that the window and door project will be done before that, but we wanna give enough time to be able to move materials and just do a clean sweep. So as of right now, we are talking about October 30th as the date. If that changes and is earlier, because the project ends earlier, then we will inform everybody in plenty of time. Bethany Pinalt, I wanna give her credit. She and I have been sending out updates to the community since the 1st of August, which is what we said we would be doing. So one will be going out this Friday. We'll again explain all of this to the parents as well. The AES staff volunteered to meet via Zoom yesterday. They met with Greg. They met with Deirdre. No. Did Deirdre meet? No. They met with Terry. They met with Bethany. They met with Joe Spengenberger, who was the OPM for the project, to talk about access into the building. One of the comments that was made is that teachers normally have three weeks. That's a falsehood. First of all, the union wouldn't allow that if we demanded teachers to come in three weeks early. I've been in education, I'm not even saying how many years. I've never seen an entire building of teachers come in August 1st. Teachers are going to be in the last few days, including Friday, Thursday, Wednesday. They will have time next week. So they will have time to take care of their building. The project timeframe has not changed. There was something that was put out, I believe by Mrs. Pinalt in June, that said that the project would be done. What we've always said is that we hope the project would be done by September 1st or September 5th. The reality was, because of supply chain issues, the windows didn't come to us until August 4th. Because of that, everything got pushed back. However, if anybody goes back to the contract, the contract said that Nina, the company, would not be leaving until the middle of October anyway. So we are still on for the same date. The building will not be closed. I cannot reiterate that enough. There's no need for the building to be closed. We have, as things have progressed, we have switched and no longer the second floor, which includes the music room and the art room. Those windows will not be in, so we will be moving art and music to an on-cart kind of process, which is done often in primary schools. That will only be happening for about a month, and then we will go back to normal. By this Friday, over 100 windows will have been installed, and by the start of the school year, expectation is that well over 175 will be completed. There were questions as to why the company wasn't working on Saturdays. The company wasn't working on Saturdays because the windows weren't here. Really is pretty straightforward. The abatement process was done early for all of the windows, so it was a matter of timing. They worked last Saturday, once the windows were here. They will be working this Saturday. They will be working Labor Day weekend. So the idea is for them to get everything done. Once the windows are done, then they will install the door portion of the project. Nate Garland and Chief O'Brien need to be thanked for all their work. Deirdre, for all of her work. I wanna thank Ari Sky for his work on the town side, Bethany Pinalts, and most of all Greg Goodwin, for all the work that you've done. Greg, did I miss anything? Did you wanna add anything?
No, just how excited we are. I'm very honest with you. When you get the opportunity to see this building, it's totally different. We didn't realize how much it would change and would actually make inside. But as you go through it, I was telling Deirdre today, and I said to Alan, if anybody wears glasses, you know when you get your new script and you put it on? Everything's so nice and bright and boldy, like, oh my God, I really am blind. But when you get into the building, it does give you that effect. The windows have such a nice lighting. And it's 50% more light. They have a tape window. They have windows that are blocked out. Oh, absolutely. It's comfortable in my chair. Nice to see everybody, by the way. So yeah, we're full of excitement. When you get in there, it does look nice. The exterior of the building has a nice finish to it. It looks like it's more than a door and window project, honestly. You come up on it, it actually looks like we've done this massive renovation on it. It just brings a brick into the windows nice and so on. So things are looking good on that level, and we've got... One of the questions that came up to us at town hall meeting, or the select board meeting, was cleaning of the building. Would that stuff be taken care of? There was concerns. Is it gonna be cleaned in time? Can the teachers get in? Is it gonna overburden our staff? Do you have time? My reply was, I'll never have enough time. We're always overburdened, because summer's just that way. So Deirdre and I had a conversation today with project manager, the lead over there, and he was telling us, you know, we wanted to ask about their cleaning crew. Do they have somebody that could help us? How does that work? So we've made a partnership. Their cleaning crew will be in on Saturday, 23rd, I believe it is, 22nd?
Saturday, September...
Yeah, apologize for the...
Second.
There we go.
Saturday, September 2nd.
So they're gonna work with our staff. They're gonna come in. Our staff is already in the building, but in the beginning of this, we did the heavy lifting. We went in, we deep cleaned classrooms and priority areas. We had everything all set, so that when the project progressed and made their way through, we just have to go back in and do the finishing touches on it, clean up where people had done, and take care of it. But after our conversation, we realized we could use a little bit of help, and they offered up the help. So they're gonna come in with a crew, and they're gonna assist us to help us get the building where it needs to be. So that should...
Could I just follow up on one?
Of course.
Thank you. Contractually, the contractor owes the owner, and therefore the district, cleaning. And so the conversation that we had is, we broke down today what the district carries their annual checklist list, and what the contractor owns as far as their cleaning contractually. So we met, we separated those two, and we have those both covered for Saturday, September 2nd. So the building will not be available to teachers on Saturday, September 2nd, as we do a full cleaning, both from the district's perspective and contractually, the contractor owes the owner.
Great. Thank you.
And then from there, we're just gonna hit the grounds and try to make the place look better.
Awesome.
If you have any questions, feel free to ask.
Questions from the committee for Greg?
Just clarification. So after school starts, the work crews are working?
4 o'clock. Yep, so I'm still...
Oh, you're not, no, sorry.
So the crews will begin after school at 4 o'clock, which is why we were not gonna allow students to be there for the after-school program. So they will go 4 to 11. They will do their cleanup, so that in the morning, we can get right to before care. Steve, question?
Yeah, just to understand that the new windows won't be in in every single location.
Correct.
What is the expectation September 5th? Are they temporary windows that are in place? What, the number of options that don't have them, what's the expectation?
So every classroom, outside classroom, in every service area where teachers are with kids on a regular basis, will have new windows. Not all of the rooms will have all of the windows. So there will be some that will be temporary. Those will then be placed. The hallway, for example, in Assawamset, the main hallway, those windows are not going to be done for September 5th.
So all of the classroom in the educational areas outside of the second floor will all have new windows?
Yes. That is what the goal is for September 5th.
Okay.
The second floor, the hallway, as the superintendent indicated, quote-unquote, adult areas where children are not being serviced, i.e. the boiler room, the custodial room, things like that, putting aside, second floor, putting aside, if we can, we're putting temporary windows on the second floor. But classrooms are what the focus has been.
And I understand your comment that we're not coming up with a contingency plan if schools not to open. But if there is a situation where a classroom is not complete, we have a contingency plan similar to what we're doing with art and music, to put them into a different location temporarily.
The only way that we would move a classroom would be if it was not safe for kids to go in. There will be, there could be potentially, for example, a classroom that has two windows installed, two that are only temporary windows. So this is, I don't want to give the the perception that every single classroom will have every single window in. That's the goal?
It is the goal.
And when we say temporary, this is not a piece of plywood. This is a...
No, 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 no.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. And Chief O'Brien has been part of that process to make sure that it's, you know, that it's safe, that it's not flammable, you know, all of that.
It's been a great collaboration. We meet weekly, and there's many topics discussed, and it really has been a great team effort and approach to this.
Thank you.
Steve? I agree. It does look great, and thank you for your time, and the communications have been great and clear, and it's been helpful to keep. But I've also driven or tried to drive all the way around the building, but you can't. Is there a traffic plan, or I assume the progress, the project progress will progress enough that there'll be a plan for buses and traffic patterns? And if so, I assume we could get some support from the town of Lakeville in terms of, for safety reasons, on traffic flow?
Yeah, there's not gonna be a change.
So that's all coming down?
Yeah.
Oh, that'll be done. So the project will progress in time for that.
So your parking lot will be just as it is every other time. It'll go back to normal. The only thing that will have fencing around it will be the very back of the building, where they have their construction site, where they contain their materials. That way, we have that portable fencing to keep people out, and nobody can get harmed back there.
I assume so, given the communications, but, you know, I just wanted to make sure in the event that we didn't do that, and there would be no impact on dismissal and entry times.
Right. No, there won't be, because we need to get everybody out, so that everybody can be out by 4 o'clock.
It's busy there anyway.
Correct.
And that would only add to it. But if we progress enough, that's great. Thank you.
My, just one question, and I think I already know the answer. So there's, I just wanna make sure that when work does begin at 4, and obviously in the sake of thinking about the safety of our students, right? There's gonna be no overlap between students being in the building and the workers coming at 4 o'clock to begin work?
So workers are, no, students will be gone.
Yep.
Staff will be gone. And workers are not entering the building until 4 o'clock. So they're not coming in 20 minutes early and setting up. We had that conversation.
Yeah, they've been directed to stay in the parking lot and their cars until the time is right, for them to migrate into the building and start their shit.
Perfect. Thank you.
All set?
All set, Greg. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Dave? The chair, just one last thing here. We don't have to talk about tonight, but when we get to the doors, I'd like to understand how we're marrying the door replacement with the current safety plan. Right? So we have a process in place, and if we're having doors in there, what's that, so that there is no gap?
Weekend.
Lack of better word.
Weekend is when it will be done and tested and all of that, but we'll get in, when we get, when we finish with the windows and get to the doors, we'll be explaining that to the community.
Bob?
Yeah, just, do we have all the materials now? Everything that we need?
Yes.
Or are we still waiting on stuff?
All the windows are in.
So we have all our materials?
Yeah. Keep going?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The playground project. As you all know, we received $100,000 through the hard work of Senator Roderick during the 22-23 school year to fix the playground at AES. Due to supply chain and storage issues, it made it impossible to complete the project in time. We are putting together a PO this week, ordering the equipment to improve the playground, because Senator Roderick's allowed us to move the money for an extra year. So we are ordering it. As supply chain issues have been drastically reduced, and so as soon as it all arrives, we will be installing it and moving forward with that. There was question, if you remember, when the Girl Scouts were here, about building this gigantic playground. And there had been original thought that it should be done at AES. After consultation with Ashley, with a number of other people, cost of AES, my personal concern as superintendent of why AES and not FES, we are looking as part of the Capitol Committee to look at redoing the playground at Grays to do ADA compliant, ADA accessible playground, so that both communities, it's more accessible. Grays will have an opportunity, their students on a regular basis. Jack, some of Jack's students would have the ability to use it. High school, life school students would have the ability to use it, and it's more centralized. So that's where we are with the playgrounds. Any questions on that?
I thought there was a requirement for you to use the 100K.
No.
No.
It's just, so there was, that conversation was out there in the public. So I have an email from Jeremy, who is Senator Roderick's aide, that says, no, that is not true. It's to fix and improve AES. Cause I asked a very specific question. Did it need to be ADA compliant, ADA accessible? I said, we're not gonna have $900,000 within that period of time, and he said, no, you don't have to do that. Okay? AP scores. It's time we talk teaching and learning. One of our favorite things to do. I know you love to talk about it. AP teachers once again did a spectacular job in preparing our students. However, as I've always said, I said it as a high school principal, all preparation for AP begins day one in pre-K. AP scores, just like graduation, is a result of what happens scaffolded from pre-K all the way through grade 12. So I wanna thank all of our teachers in the district who helped create habits of mind, so that students would want to be successful. This year, 83% of the tests taken at Ponacquid Regional High School received qualifying scores, which is the highest percentage in a number of years, despite the fact that more students took AP courses. It is very difficult, when you raise the number of people taking the test, to also increase the percentage of people getting a qualifying score. For people in public, just so you know, qualifying score is a 3, 4, or 5. I could talk about each of the courses. I don't wanna do that. It's too much time. I will tell you that we did have two courses that had 100% pass rates, which is rare, which would mean all of our students in that course received a 3 or higher. And that all of our courses, all of them, were significantly above state average, which is wonderful. That's real good news. New to Ponacquid. Terry and I really came from a district in which grade correlation was vitally important. So if a student receives a 2 on their test, they probably should be getting a C or a D in their overall grade. Grade inflation is very dangerous. We don't want kids taking AP courses, getting As, and then getting ones on a test. That grade correlation is not good for anyone. That's about padding. That's about not teaching correctly. So we spent time reviewing the grade correlations. We talked about it last year a little bit with the high school administrative team. To me, it is, and I was a former AP teacher, it is the most monumental indicator of successful practice, without a doubt. And I know that our teachers, in talking to them, some individually do it. We have not done it collectively. Ponacquid had an 88% correlation. That is outstanding. Now, if you remember, I was named last year with your approval to be part of National Advisory Board for College Board in AP. The average correlation around the country, because I got the data this summer, was 68%. So significant. To give you an example, to have effective grade correlation, you must be within one standard deviation. So what do we mean by that? If a student gets a B for their overall grade in AP psychology, one standard deviation means they should either get a 5 on their test, which is really an A, a 4 on their test, or no lower than a 3 on their test. 88% of our students were right on. That's a tribute to our teachers, and something to be really proud of. So that's exceptional data, that I think we need to talk more about. I really wanna spend our year talking about teaching and learning this year, and this is a great jumpstart. Terry will be getting into MCAT scores and all of that, but I thought this was a good start for all of us, bringing a little joy to the world.
Thank you, Alan.
Fall tryouts are taking place, and I wanna thank Mr. Cabusio for all his work in preparing for the fall season. Greg and Tristan and your team for all the work that you've done to prepare the fields. Athletic boosters have been fantastic. They're doing things such as media days, getting more students and parents involved, so I wanted to thank them. And then I wanna thank our custodians. They've done a remarkable job preparing the buildings. Buildings just look fantastic. I'm gonna continue to reiterate, as great as our buildings look, we are woefully understaffed, and yet they look amazing. And so we need to continue to thank them and continue to look for more people. Our secretaries have done a great job all year. We're just really excited for our new teachers to come in, our teachers to come in, and then most of all, for our students to come in.
Thank you, Alan. Any questions for Superintendent Strauss regarding superintendent support or comments? Steve?
Bus route. Based on how many buses is that?
24.
24?
Yes.
So we went with that extra?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Open positions. You said there are four. Open, three. Open.
There are three. There are three, and one of them is a position that we had, we were sure we had, and then they decided they could job at another school, which I will not mention publicly, which was a school psychologist position. Yes, so.
That's on the teaching and learning side. Do we have any open position on the custodial side?
We have, uh, are we completely filled for?
At this time, we're completely filled.
Okay.
Wow.
It's, it's health pretty steady, which is good. We made it through the summer with everyone, so that's a.
Yeah. When we started putting things out in Sunday messages and all of that, we got some people, and they've been fantastic, so.
Great.
I, I think that's amazing, the 88%. But I also think it highlights that we have a lot of ground to make up at our primary grades. Right? So we have a lot of work, and I know what we put in for services and try and do that to get them prepared for our K to five grade, so that way, do my math, five to seven years that they take AP classes, they're just as prepared, so.
Yeah, I think, so I'm, I'm going to say that the number one most significant change is going to be our Orton Gilliam teaching.
Great.
Without a doubt. And I, I've had a number of superintendents ask the question, why did you go in that direction? And the data is going to show, because it will be phenomenal.
And remember, if I can throw in there at the same time, she will be working with a small, the smallest number of students, right? But what that does is shifts the opportunity for our literacy specialists to then work with students more consistently in, in their groupings. So it's going to help bridge those two-year-plus gaps and get students reading more fluently and more successfully in the, in the pockets within both of elementarys. It's going to be exciting.
You go back, you know, when, when you were all in the throes of COVID and, and those of us that were elsewhere, what we didn't take into account was how long the impact would be. I think there was a belief, once we came back to school, everything would be normal. Most people have said it was going to be a four or five year. It, it was going to take four or five years for there to be a change. And, and so I, I think when we talk about M score, MCAT scores, there certainly are places to grow, without question, but I don't think it's as monumental as, as it had been previously. So we're going in a good direction.
Last question is class size. I'm extremely concerned about one grade level at AES.
Grade two?
Grade two.
Yep.
If I've done my quick math, we're looking at about a 22 class size. We're not even at the start of school, and we're already predicting 22. I can only imagine what it'd be when we have some parents coming in. So I would ask the administration to look at, you know, if we add another teacher to that, that breaks it down to 19, right? And I, we have to expect that there are other students that are going to be coming into that aspect of it. The rest of the classes, that primary, you know, 16, 19, 20, 15, 16, 18, 70 at, at FES, I, I'm just concerned about that grade two, and I know in years past, we, we sort of looked at whether we need to add an additional teacher into that, so.
So when we left in June, numbers didn't look like that, things always change, so.
Yep.
You know, certainly Bethany and I and Terry and, and Deirdre and, and Ashley will sit down and look at it, and, and we'll go from there.
Okay. Any other questions for Superintendent Strauss? Awesome. Uh, moving on, acceptance of minutes, at this point, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes of 6:28:23.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion, do I have a second? We have a second. Any further discussion revolving around the minutes of 6:28:23? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anyone abstaining?
I abstain.
Steve Owens will abstain, and I'm assuming Ms. Donnie, he will abstain as well. Great, okay, motion passes there. Now looking at the executive session minutes, um, from the same time period, 6:28:23, I will accept the motion to approve those minutes.
So move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Anyone abstain?
Abstain.
So Ms. Donnie who is abstaining. Moving down, moving right along, agenda item number eight, other presentations to the school committee, anything this evening under that? Okay, great. Going on to agenda item number nine is public participation, and again, just want to remind folks, it will shall, it is going to be in accordance with policy BEDH, each speaker will be permitted a maximum of three minutes, during which time they can speak about topics within the scope of the responsibilities of school committee. I have been tasked this year with upholding our three-minute requirement here, so if you do have something to say to the school committee, please make it brief, please understand that you are going to have three minutes, it'll be cut off after three minutes, it's very, very hard to do, but unfortunately, that's where we are going. So anyone for public participation at this time? Okay, seeing nobody, moving down to agenda item number 10, old business and FY24 budget update, Ms. Deirdre Welch.
Good evening. In your handout, in your packet, you have your FY24 year-to-date reflecting one month of activity. The top half, as you know, is broken down to revenue. As you can see, your only revenue to date for FY24 is your Chapter 70, which, as you know, is your State of Massachusetts school education funding. You see the $915,736, that is your jaloon, jaloon, excuse me, that is your July allotment. As far as your general fund expense area, which is obviously at the bottom half of your year-to-date information, we have started to encumber our payroll for the year. Most of the expenses that you see in remaining, for example, in the region, our health insurance, our property and casualty insurance, and some of those annual expenses that we're just receiving invoices for. So as we start to work through those encumbrances and pay those annual bills, obviously, those year-to-date figures are increasing, and those remaining funds are committed, if you will. Happy to answer any questions that you might have in that regard.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments for Ms. Donnie Welch at this time? Go ahead, Steve.
Well, it is what it is, we're, what, six weeks into the fiscal year, right? So, but as we get forward, we definitely need to, I would like to, once we complete with the summer project, and this is more facilities-based, what did we complete in the summer? What the budget impact was, those pieces? There's always some summer project that we need to do outside of the general maintenance, so where that would be, because I think that'll be helpful to the community. Obviously, the windows and doors at Assawam said, everyone can see that, but there have been several other things that have been done, so if we can get a recap of that for our next meeting, and then the budget impact, that'd be great, thank you.
Certainly.
Great. All right, moving right along, agenda item number 11, new business. So 11A is a request for qualifications RFQ award to the House Doctor Professional Services. There is a vote required attached to this.
Happy to field that, if you will. Thank you. This is very exciting, I am very excited to speak to this tonight. You'll have, you have two votes in front of you this evening. You should have two votes in your packet.
Yep.
As you recall, in March of 2023, Free Town Lakeville Regional School District issued an RFQ, which is Request for Qualifications for Professional Services for House Doctor, Engineering, Architectural, and Other Professional Design Services. That RFQ resulted in a process where we got different vendors that submitted their qualifications. There was a process to go through that selected and ranked. The Capitol Subcommittee got together and ranked as a group, and then the group interviewed two. They ranked the qualified firms that came through the interview process, and we moved forward with the highest ranking, ranking firm, that was Habib and Associates. So tonight, you are going to be awarding Habib and Associates to be your house doctor for the RFQ services that you advertised for, which means they basically are on retainer, similar to your lawyer, if you will. House doctor allows the district to have a sewer leak and not have to go out to bid. House doctor allows the district to go out and get roof repair above the threshold of $50,000, of $100,000, where you would be required to get architectural and design services. If you had to go out every single time under Chapter 149, which is your construction bid process, every single time, you would just have a bid department. This way, your house doctor, who's qualified, can provide services throughout the year based on what the facility issue that you have is. That was the RFQ that you sent out, that was the process that got us to here tonight, which is to award, your first vote, the House Doctor RFQ services to Habib and Associates.
Got it.
How much is it?
Buck?
Where, where are they located?
Habib and Associates is located in Norwell, I get my Norwell, Norwood, Norfolk. They have offices in the area in Duxbury, and their headquarters, I'm sorry, I don't have it right with me. I'm sure it's on the letterhead from the agreement right here, thank you, Norwell. So there's an office in Norwell and a office in Worcester.
Are they a house doctor for any other districts in the area?
Absolutely, they do a lot of house doctor services, I'll pass this down to you, this is an extra. I also have a lot, I shouldn't say a lot, I have a few extra of that document there, which is the professional architects, the AIA folks, the mechanical engineers that are available to the district, dependent on, you know, what the pain is, what the doctor is going to treat. So you're awarding the concept of being able to call a house doctor and get services. So you're not awarding any money yet, that's your second vote.
Right.
If you will, so I've charted those votes, if you will, here. These have been reviewed by your attorney, the entire process I have had, Depreci in Long, excuse me, review the RFP, the votes, the subsequent contracts, to make sure that we're all on the same path.
And can you just do us a favor?
Yes.
And we'll certainly make these motions for you this evening, and thank you so much for thoroughly explaining them for us. Can you talk through just the funding mechanism for the second motion and where that money's coming from?
Absolutely. The second motion that you'll take tonight is to award Habib, under the House Doctor contract, a specific project. That specific project has been a project that the school committee has desired for the community, called master planning. During the last year, the school committee put aside $200,000 for master planning. When I started negotiations with Steve Habib, he provided the schedule that I handed out for you. I'm sorry, I did not get to include this in your packet, my apologies. This is the schedule that Steve Habib and I negotiated with, and it's based on the functions as you can see in master planning and what's associated in those functions. This timetable is draft, it's quite aggressive, but that's Deirdre. But this provides you what a master planning schedule and associated tasks would look like. I agreed with Steve that they looked wonderful. We also had this conversation after Habib came to the district, as I reported to you last school committee meeting, they were coming July 10th to the district to work with Mr. Goodwin and collect all our ASBILs, all our construction documents, any document that they could look at and say, this district has their act together, so we don't have to spend a lot of time with these documents, therefore, we can do this. And then we started talking fee. To be perfectly blunt, he said, we can do this for $250,000. And I said, to be perfectly blunt, we have 200, but we want everything I see here. So he agreed. So the fee for master planning is $200,000. The funding the school committee has identified as of last year, in Fund Number Two, look at it, 291, I believe, your foundation reserve fund, which has, you, you voted 100,000, but it has a little more than 100,000 in it, that fund, the call was made to the department, the department approved the use of that fund for this purpose, those funds have been put aside. The school committee also talked about the additional $100,000 coming out of either one of two places, A, the regular general fund budget, if there were monies left available at the end of the year, if not, the remaining and/or the total amount would go to Essar. That was the funding at the time the school committee was presented with for master planning.
Yep. Absolutely, thank you, I just, I just wanted that stated publicly again, so I appreciate that. A lot to digest here, any questions for Ms. Deirdre Welch regarding? We do, yep. Any questions? No, we can go.
Why don't we make a motion, I think we have the discussion.
Sure.
This is a vote.
Yeah, that's a great idea, thank you, Steve. So I will accept a motion to vote to approve the contract for designer services for ongoing house doctor planning and construction projects with Habib and Associate Architects, dated August 23rd, 2023, to authorize the Chair of the School Committee to execute the agreement and to authorize and delegate authority to the Superintendent of the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District to effect and enforce the agreement. At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
I have a motion for Mr. Clark, do I have a second? A second from Mr. Sylvia. At this point, further discussion, Steve?
So has there been any conversation around any potential conflict of interest with Habib being the house, what are the house doctor contract, then being the master planning?
No, that's exactly the post-master planning?
Yes. So if they come back and say, all of this, this is what we're going to, this report we're going to do, does that null and void them from completing any of what the recommendation? Based on conflict of interest, or no?
No.
That was a long no.
Because I'm thinking about architectural services, OPM services, all your firms are expert at a little bit, so if a master plan identifies a new high school, nothing should preclude a responsible vendor for bidding on a job, that's an MSBA funded job, they have to be qualified.
The only thing that I would, would recommend, just from a consistency perspective, we typically have in these, it's either the superintendent or one that he, he or she delegates.
Designate.
Designate, yes. So I, I think we should add that clause in there, because right now, it specifically says. So I think we should add that clause in there, because right now it specifically says only the superintendent could do that.
Yep.
So.
Or designate.
Authority of the superintendent.
Or designate.
And or designate.
Yep.
So any, so just from a whole aspect of it, so I think there's an addendum to that, and I think we should, one, table the original vote, okay? And then we can amend the motion to add designate to that, if we're gonna be explicit, especially if the legal is reviewed.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Great.
So I only make a motion to table the existing vote that's on the.
So moved, second. All those in favor to table the original motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to that? No? Anyone abstaining?
Abstain.
Okay.
So I will make a motion to vote to approve the contract for designer services for ongoing house doctor planning and construction projects with Habib and Associates Architects dated August 23rd, 2023, to authorize the chair of the school to execute the agreement and to authorize and delegate authority to the superintendent or designee of the Free Town Lakeville Regional School District to enforce or to effect and enforce the agreement.
I would just say, Steve, that you might wanna say, or superintendent's designee.
That's fine.
Because it could be me. Do you want me to do that?
Okay.
Right. Okay. So I have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
We have a second. Okay. All those in favor at this point? Or any further discussion regarding the amended motion? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Abstaining.
Ms. Donahue is abstaining. All right. So one, motion number one passes unanimously. Number two, to vote to approve the amendment for master planning to the contract for designer services for ongoing house doctor planning and construction projects with Habib and Associates Architects dated August 23rd, 2023, which is a first amendment to the agreement, to authorize the chair of the school committee to execute the master planning amendment and to authorize and delegate authority to the superintendent or designee of the, to effect and enforce the master planning agreement.
Yeah, motion to approve.
All right. I have a motion. Do I have a second? Well, we gotta get a second first. Someone give me a second.
I'll second.
Second. Mr. Owen, further discussion? Mr. Owen?
Our finance person, do we need to designate or outline a not-to-exceed amount in this?
Two hundred thousand dollars.
But do we need to put that into the motion?
No, no. I specifically asked Kelly that.
Okay.
It's the contract that specifies that she's gone through and specifies that.
And technically, this would be considered budgetary, so it would require a two-thirds vote, not just a simple majority. Would you constitute this as budgetary?
I would constitute it as budgetary, but I would also suggest that the school committee has also voted to put the funds aside.
But we're spending it towards Habib, right? I hope I pronounced the name correctly.
Yes.
I think just to be safe and sorry, I think we should go with the two-thirds vote, just because it is financial budgetary in nature.
Okay. Yep. Okay. Yep, agree with that. All right, so we have a motion and second. All those in favor, do we need a roll call vote?
A roll call.
Yep, roll call vote. Renee, please.
Will Sankovich.
Yes.
Gene Fox.
Aye.
Bob Clark.
Yes.
Steve Sylvia.
Yes.
Jane Blum.
Yes.
Brendan, are you?
Abstain.
Perfect. All right. Both motions pass. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, yeah, it's exciting work. It's exciting. Go ahead, Steve.
I know. So, all great colors and stuff like this, right? Because you're very good at strong-arming.
Actually, can I just, I'm sorry. Today at AES, I mean, we're moving it, and it's wonderful. Someone called me, you know, you're just like General Milley, and I'd follow you anywhere. So, excuse me, I do strong-arm a little bit.
So my ask is, can we overlay this to our budget calendar? Okay? And my, because of the fact that if out of this comes pieces that we need to either incorporate into the budget or incorporate as different amendments to the ask, I'd like to get some of this information sooner rather than later, because getting a final report on June 17, now we're looking at fall town meetings, the next year's budget would have you. So, strong-arming is such a strong word, but your persuasive personality, so if you can overlay this calendar to the budgetary calendar, thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
It's a great call, Steve. Thank you. All right, moving right along. Item number 12, Director Report, Ms. Deirdre Farrell Welch, we are staying with you. What do you got for us?
In your packet, you'll have a report. I have focused, it's five pages long, I don't wanna cover everything with you, but what I am trying to highlight for the school committee is efforts around the business office specifically related to my concerns around the fact that we've had multiple people in the financial area of the district, and I've asked the auditors to kind of come in and take a look at a few things, specifically related to revenue, for example, and the revenue trending over the past few years, and how the logic may have shifted a little bit, not only legislatively, but also between maybe a transition or turnover. So I've engaged the auditors for additional professional services, just like we were talking about engaging the house doctor for helping us with master planning or finding a leak, et cetera, et cetera. That's kind of turned into them assisting us and engaging them for the certification of excess and deficiency this year. They're going to also assist us with all of the, taking a look at all of our end-of-the-year transactions that we've done and rolled into FY24, and to make sure that we're bridging those, that logic correctly, and booking those assessments that we have for the state and other areas that I believe should be taking a look at. Your assessments are charter school assessments, you're being assessed for other things that reduces your chapter 70, and if they're not captured and understood in full, and you're rolling into your end-of-the-year, you sometimes get an unexpected bill that you weren't expecting that maybe we could have booked along the way. So it's strategies within your business office that I'm kind of looking for the auditor's assistance to say, they've been here for 25 years. So how have we been doing for our revenue budgets over the years? How has it affected the district negatively, positively, and what can we put into place to streamline and put any efficiencies in? You'll see that theme as you roll through a few of these items. Revenue was an important one, I thought, a critically important one. The other issue that the district had that we immediately focused on was your FY22, end-of-the-year per pupil and financial report, had not been audited, and it had not been submitted to the Department of Education. And therefore, the Department of Education withheld your fourth quarter regional transportation of eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars. So, that was job one. That was the drive July 10th to the auditors, and Jack and I met in Norwell, and, Norwell? And we went through everything for the purposes of identifying what we needed to do, to do two things. Submit the audit to answer any outstanding questions that the auditors had had, to understand any previous year's end-of-the-year journal entries that we should be thinking about making and submitting that report. And we came out with a game plan, but we also agreed that it was FY22. There was nothing material in there, which material isn't a good thing in an audit report. There was nothing material whatsoever, and you have been auditing for 20 years. So let's agree with what we have right here. We're gonna go back, meet with the superintendent, report to the superintendent, signed off on exactly what we were required to sign off of after working with our auditors, sent it to the department, and this afternoon, we've got eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of previous year's transportation. That came in today.
Great job.
So, what we wanna do is just streamline that process and get that kind of work done a little earlier. To that end, the second bullet on the report talks about FY23's end-of-the-year report. That's the same report that we relate with, the same report that was unaudited, and the same report that resulted in the withholding of regional transportation. So Jack and I are working together and achieving that report. It is due September 29th. You're allowed to request a extension. Ten years out of ten years, I've requested an extension when I was working. It's a valid reason, particularly with transition, quite frankly, and with the audit work that we're doing to put it all together. That report will be due October 30th after we're granted the extension, which I anticipate to be granted. And then we bring in the audit to audit that, because he was just here finishing excess and deficiency. So we just roll this whole thing together, so we submit these audits on time. It's a lot of work. Thank you, Jack, for kind of hanging in there. Jack has been listening to all this conversation going on, taking really great notes, as we work through his practicum as well. It's good work. I have slowed things down in the business office just a bit, so that there is some recognition of the good work that we are doing. A couple days ago, I walked out of my office, and I had a yellow sticking in my hand, I think it was blue, and it said, two words on it, mechanical and logical. And I stood in the middle of the office, and I yelled, "Campfire!", which is what I do when everyone sticks their heads out, because I wanna say something. So everyone stuck their head out. And I said, "You guys, we've been together since April, and I couldn't be more proud of you, because you are thinking less mechanically and more logically, because we've slowed this down, and we're talking to people about what your role is, where you fit in it, and why you're doing what you're doing." So it's really good work. It's reflected in this long memo to you. The auditors have shared this information as well. I am thrilled to report that they'll be coming in in the fall, depending on your schedule and when you wanna set them up. You should see your auditors that have been here for 20 years. It should be maybe right around when we do excess and deficiency, so that you can have all of that audited, updated balance sheet information. So that will be very exciting, I think, if that's your kind of thing. But what I'm really excited to report on is the work that the business office has done with, under Adrian's leadership, with MT RS. As you know, I reported to you in June that we were a full year behind on MT RS, and we were struggling. And Adrian had a contact that her previous district, we were able to make, we were able to get a little bit of headway, get a little organized, and since we were able to do that work, we are up to date through October. Now, I know that doesn't sound like much, but think about what a database looks like in July and August in a school system. You've got retirees, you've got resignations, you've got people coming in, you've got people coming out. You've moved districts, you've moved retirement plans, and all of that data gets kicked out from MT RS until you clean it out, every single record. So those three months have been totally cleaned up now. It's accurate, and the purpose of me telling you this is the rest of the month should go a little easier, if you will, as long as we have the time to kind of catch up. So that's exciting, exciting news as well. The rest of the report just talks to the summer facilities work that this gentleman has led in the district, similar to what the superintendent was talking about. The big, most exciting thing, well, they're all very exciting, but the domestic water leak has been solved. Domestic water leak occurred under a crawl space, a four-foot crawl space. You're on a slab here, this building is on a slab, except for where your boiler room is. Your boiler room is below grade. You've got a four-foot slab where you're running piping back and forth to get your heat. Twenty odd years ago, there wasn't enough hot water getting to the vocational wing at the time. So somebody said, you know what, why don't we put a hot water booster right in the middle of the tank?
Right underneath the gym.
Right underneath the gym floor. You would have never, ever, ever thought to look underneath a gym floor for fourteen thousand gallons of water. We were out in the fields, we were digging through buildings, we were looking at irrigation systems, toilets, gomodes, sinks, pipes. This thing is so tight right now, it's unbelievable. But we were able to find it because we had such humid weather this summer, that gym start, oh, wait a minute. So immediately Servpro was, well, first of all, before immediately, this guy over here goes down to the crawl space, splish splash, and fourteen thousand, and it's dry as a bone right now, which I still can't believe. But we got right on that, Servpro was in here, fans were rolling, we were metering wood humidity, every few wood humidity, for days, metering wood humidity, getting it down below certain levels, and making sure.
So I will add to that. Had that not been found, the whole gym floor would have needed to be replaced.
Yeah.
It would have been, because it started to buckle a little bit, it would have been, you're talking eighty, ninety thousand dollars. So it was a good catch.
And what we wanna do, and we've been talking about doing typically right before basketball season, Thanksgiving season, because of the humidity, you can't do your floor, your gym is in the summer anymore. So if we could hit that and take it down to the wood, you haven't taken your gym floor down to the wood in 10 years. So it's 10 years every time you do that, you might be perfect, perfect time to do that, because of the issues here that the superintendent raises, and what we could possibly do here. That'd be a great time to do it.
Deirdre, you just took me on a ride.
But I'm almost done, though. So, what did I do on my, I'm on page three. So, number three, I'm gonna skip vestibules, but number three kind of goes to what you were talking about, Steve. This is the summer annual maintenance activities that we've done. We've listed it all here to come do some checklists, but to pull out some of the things that have capital monies to them that we're going to need in addition to is something we can definitely start to work on and produce. The train piece, number four here, I am absolutely thrilled to tell you that train has been in. And your rooftop units that we talked about this summer, that we had some deficiencies, they weren't pulling, they weren't actually working, we identified, the school committee approved a seventeen thousand dollar purchase order, and that seventeen thousand dollars had accomplished these three bullets, excuse me, twenty-eight out of thirty-four are now working at grays. This is bringing in all your indoor air quality, it's moving throughout the building. We've got some of the failed deficiencies that we're looking at quotes for in the high school and in the middle school, that are electrical in nature, that will need parts, that isn't part of the performance contract, so we'll have to get some fee monies involved there. But this improves tremendously what we were trying to accomplish over the last year or so with regards to your HVAC deficiencies and getting them under control. And we also got twenty-five thousand dollar rebate out of train after filling out, I don't know, some sort of, strong-arming somebody for something, and so we got twenty-five thousand dollars. And then lastly, here's your summer technology work that the superintendent talked about, Craig, Ryan, Charlie, Ryan, absolutely unbelievable what they've pulled off here. You certainly have it in front of you here. And lastly, you see here some shift in the responsibility of actual transportation, working with parents, as opposed to the actual 30B bid to try to get best quotes, best pricing on behalf of the town of Lakeville, because the. on behalf of the town of Lakeville because the assessment for your Aggie students are on the cherry sheet for the town of Lakeville. So, here we have gone through the process of 30B, trying to get quotes, trying to work with other local vendors to get our students, because sometimes it's a low volume, to get to our Aggie schools. It was burdensome to the office because what we inherited there for was their daily calls about a late bus, Johnny's not coming to school today, we have a half day, the bus is late, do you know where it is? Can you call? These aren't our kids. It concerned me greatly when I started to look at this. Are we also in the transportation business? Because we should remove ourselves, but be able to provide Aggie students with a quote-unquote "home-to-school, school-to-home" transportation experiences, which is the law. It's not how are we going to get just this one kid over here, the cheapest way we can -- we don't do that anymore. So, we worked very hard with our superintendent over at the agricultural school, Ken Rizendes -- I don't say that right, Ken, and helping us provide the Essex Aggie with a viable, long-term transportation company for their transportation services for their kids to work with their parents. The contract is between Ken and the town of Lakeville. Town of Lakeville pays Ken for the services for the Aggie kids. We've got the best price we could for our Lakeville students for home-to-school, school-to-home, safe transportation, but we don't provide the daily and weekly, annual school year support for that transportation. And it really is very important. I want to know where all my kids are at twenty-four seven, and I want to be able to get on Aspen, and I can find my kids. If I'm in a reunification situation on a bus accident, I've got it all right here. I don't have the Aggie kids. They don't have them. They need to have their kids.
And they do now.
They do now. Thank you very much.
Sarah Walsh, thank you so much for that. Absolutely God sent, and personally, your reports bring me a lot of joy. Any questions? Steve, go ahead.
Of course you do. Sarah Walsh, just want to confirm, when you say LM in your report, you're referring to Lynch-Marini, correct?
Yes, thank you.
Go back to page one here. The eight-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand dollars for the regional transportation, is that being applied to the current year?
No.
Okay. So, where is that money going?
It was booked on June 30th as a receivable that we were anticipating coming in after July 1st. So, that's booked against your obligation in FY23 that we were expecting to offset your expenses.
So, is there any budget offset with this?
No.
Okay. And so, that has nothing in applying to the twenty-four buses we have in place this year? Thank you.
You're welcome. I tried.
Nice try.
Trying. I'm using the logic.
Yeah, the logic.
Okay. Going over to the MTRS, is there a timetable when we think we will be caught up?
I'd feel better answering that as we go along because, again, that October month, there was so much. Now that we've got payroll open for September, let's see how we roll with November, December, and let's see how fast we can get up. I will give me a month, I will report to you next school.
Let me ask the question a different way. Are we expecting this to all be caught up by June 30th, 2024?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
All right. My next question, I just want to reiterate because I know Mr. Goodwin and I remember this, in your interview where you very adamantly said that you would be the one crawling in for crawl spaces. But we'll take that up in a later date.
I had a dress on that day.
The concern I have with the gym floor and any work in this, what impact will that have to unify basketball?
We've been talking about these.
It doesn't.
No?
No. So, for volleyball, remember volleyball's in there too.
Yeah, that's true, yes.
So, volley, no. It's not a big enough -- so, the term that they use as a former basketball coach is cupping. So, when floorboards cup a little bit, so it was at eleven percent, I think it was, Greg? How much?
Twelve percent.
Twelve percent. That's certainly playable. Had it not been found and it's at twenty and twenty-five and thirty percent, then -- so, there's no issues.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
There's no issues.
Regarding the vestibule, is there planning to send out communication from each of the schools to highlight this as the new process and what's going on in that?
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the last question to this is, on the Aggie side, I think it's great news, but have we communicated out to those Aggie students that this is a change because it's going to be a?
Absolutely. I was on the phone with the superintendent on Friday, Ken over the weekend, Ken on Monday morning. We're really trying to be incredibly supportive and really working with the superintendent. He was really great. I said, "I'm not talking about who's doing the work. It's not about that. It's not about money, regional transportation. These are your kids. You need to be able to --" And so, that's where it's really coming from, and the ability to turn it over to first student is a coup for him.
No, I just wanted to make sure that.
The answer's yes.
So, have we, are they still being picked up at the high school?
Yes.
So, the routes haven't really changed, it's just more the fact of the -- thank you.
Any other questions at this point? Ms. Bule, good luck following that up.
Hi, you just stole my thunder. I was just going to say, how the heck am I going to follow that? Well, here we are. Special education, student services, kicking off the new school year. Our staff, which we have one new addition this year, started back this week. We were coming back in -- well, they're coming back in small increments. So, just to skip ahead in my report and talk a little bit about what the breakdown looks like, which we discussed last year during budget season, we have Meredith Foy, who is going to be our pre-K to three FES special education administrator. We have hired Ms. Kelly Steele, and she is already showing that she's going to be an amazing addition to our administrative staff. She will be doing K to five at AES and Gray's. We have Ms. Danielle Johansson, who was a typo on the last page, I apologize. She's doing six through twelve FLMS and ARHS. And then that now allows me to focus on my director role while also overseeing on a district and keeping my hands in the special education programming at FLMS and ARHS, simply because I'm not ready to give that up, so, for selfish reasons, of course. So, if we go back to page one, I will talk about a little bit of the busy summer in a few minutes. I want to go into numbers and what things look like going into the new school year. So, you probably recall from last February when we first started talking about budget, that I had some pretty significant concerns coming into this school year. And I think that it did prove that coming into this year, we are in a place where we feel comfortable, but we're definitely going to be growing fast. So, we are right now at kind of a plateau as to where we were in June, but this is not counting in the move-ins that we have because we still have registrations that are open, kids that are going to be coming in in the next week. And I talked a little bit about move-ins in that report too, which I'll highlight in a second. So, looking at your class size update, I always like to go by this when I'm looking at enrollment numbers. We can see that AES, their enrollment numbers are down slightly, but again, this is only September, right? There's lots that could change in the next month or two. However, our special education numbers are only down by three in comparison to where we were in June. So, we have a total special education count at AES of eighty-two. FES is our biggest decrease in special education, and it's primarily focused on our preschool. Our preschool is much smaller going into the new school year than we anticipated, especially in considering all of the referrals that came through last year and the influx of students that were coming into our pre-K program last year. So, I am a little bit relieved that it's a little bit smaller, but we already do have quite a few evaluations in the pipeline coming in. And September through December is usually a hot time for early intervention referrals as well.
Seventy? Is it seventy?
Total district, not just elementary, which I talked about evaluations. We'll get to that in a second. So, FES is currently down nineteen students in comparison to where we were in June with a total of eighty-five special education students. And this does, like I said, include the pre-K population. But you can see in our class size update that enrollment overall at FES is down significantly as well in comparison to where we were in June with four hundred and thirty. We're now at three hundred and seventy-three. So, that is a pretty big difference. But don't worry too much because those large classes from AES and FES that impacting that enrollment now rolled over to Gray's. So, Gray's has, you know, only increased by three though, so it did even out a little bit. We did unfortunately, I'm kind of rolling in all these parts to try to consolidate my report, but we did unfortunately just lose our SEL teacher at Gray's. She resigned for some personal reasons, and we are in the process of trying to find a teacher for that. So, this just happened last week. So, we are actively looking for a teacher for that classroom, and hopefully, we're going to be able to find someone before the kickoff of the new school year. So, that is one of the vacancies that Alan had alluded to at the beginning. You can see at FLMS, their enrollment is up by quite a lot, I would think. I can't do that math in my head, Steve. What about thirty-something, maybe? But they're down in special education numbers. We did have a very large eighth grade class that moved on to the high school, which you'll see when you look at ARHS. Even though we have nineteen kids that are leaving to go to other high schools, we still are up eleven kids at the high school. And that is, again, not including our move-ins that we have currently pending. So, we are at a building total of four hundred and ninety, which is comparable to where we were at the beginning of budget season in March of four ninety-one. So, that concerns me just a little bit because at the end of last year, we're where we are right now instead of being a little bit lower, which I kind of anticipated with kids that were moving out and our graduating kiddos. However, when we consider out-of-district kids, kids that are homebound, students that may be homeschooled or tutored for whatever reason, we're at a total of five thirty-one. And again, not counting move-ins just yet. So, we are a little bit higher than I anticipated in the beginning of the year. I know we're not at that six hundred mark where I thought we were going to be once we get back into budget season again, but we are well on our way. And in just stating that, I just wanted to make it known to all of you that last year, when we look at our total special education numbers, we added an additional sixty-eight new special education students by referral. So, that means that a parent or a teacher referred a student to special education and they were found eligible for an IEP. So, that was an additional sixty-eight students in total from last year in evaluations. And then in addition to that, we had twenty-one move-ins for special education, which is a total of eighty-nine kids added on to our numbers. So, I do anticipate that we are going to continue to grow as I had anticipated last year, and I will obviously keep you posted every month on what that looks like and what changes come our way. Our out-of-district numbers, good news there is it's pretty much the same. We're actually at thirty-two. We just lost a kiddo that moved to Fall River, so it's actually thirty-two now as of yesterday. I did go through and do some eighth grade transfers over the years just so you can see where we are in comparison to previous years with eighth graders moving out or moving on to other schools. I think in June, when I reported, we had seventeen students, eighth graders moving on to different schools. Now, we're at nineteen, so we've had two more that have been accepted over the summer months, which I think is exciting. And then I also went through and compiled our data for move-ins and move-outs from last year. So, last year, we had twenty-one move-ins total all year for special education only. This isn't district-wide move-ins. This is only students with special education services. Coming in as of right now, we have fifteen, and that's only for this incoming piece. So, we're not even at the total number of move-ins for the year, and we're already almost at where we were for the year total last year. So, that's something just to keep in the back of your minds. We do have lots of evaluations that are going to be taking place as soon as we hit the ground running on September 5th. A little bit nervous about this because we are down a psychologist, which has been posted since June, and we still have not been able to fill. We have reposted, thanks to Renee for dealing with me over and over again, asking to repost this to try to get fresh candidates, but we still have the same four that originally applied that were not candidates that we felt that we could bring into the district. We did have a great candidate that we thought was going to sign with us. I went back and forth with her for two weeks. We thought that she was a great fit, but she ended up signing somewhere else, which was a huge loss because I think she would have been a great asset. But we're going to have to get creative. I've been reaching out to local agencies, the collaboratives, trying to see if we can at least bring someone in part-time to help with evaluations because that was one of the sightings that we got cited for last summer. We didn't have a psychologist, and they still called us out and said that we weren't meeting timelines. They didn't care that we weren't staffed. So, that's something that's a little concerning going into the new year. That's a huge role, and it's a very valuable person. So, we have a total number of seventy-seven district-wide rolling into the new year, which, again, makes me a little bit anxious, but we will be okay. I'm confident that we will find someone to help us as we move along. Just some brief updates and announcements. The DESI visit took place March 23rd. We still have not received the report. I think that's kind of funny. CPAC, CPAC, we met in June to talk about the upcoming school year. CPAC has lots of great ideas for this upcoming school year with, I think, some help from both Mr. Strauss and myself, of course. They will be represented at school committee meetings. They're going to actually come to the next one, so they will have a spot where they will be able to give some updates on what they're thinking. We're not going to have them come to every month's meeting. We'll probably be given like every other month or every three months, some updates as to what's happening with CPAC. And then I'm in the process of finalizing the meeting dates, and I will have those posted for you guys next month when we meet so that you have the dates that CPAC is being held, which is typically here at six-thirty on the first Tuesday of every month in the library here, obviously, at Ponquay. And we will hope that you come and you listen to the group and you hear what they have to share out. We already talked about the vacancies. We did just get a resignation for a grade-two special education teacher at FES as well, so the timing of that is just really tough because these are two teacher positions as well as a psychologist that we are looking to fill. As I had mentioned, when I first started chatting, summer has been very busy. We've been working on our 240 and 262 grants, which are in process. They have increased, not significantly, but we are getting a little bit more than we previously got. And I've also been working on state reports for post-secondary outcomes as well as preschool transition data, which are due at the end of the summer. So, that is all things that have been taking place. Our ESY program was a success this year. We did have a couple of hiccups, had some trouble with staffing, but we did make it through, and I'm so appreciative of everybody who helped and supported our special education students during the summer months. The program ran for five weeks, July 10th to August 10th, and was housed throughout the district. We had programs mainly at Gray's, but then we had our program kiddos going to their buildings that they're used to so that it's not ruffling with their schedule or causing any issues with transition. The only downfall to this in calculating the numbers is we only had seventy-four out of a hundred and twenty-six attend, which I feel like is a smaller number than last year. And we did make a number of outreach. We offered transportation, and our numbers were still a little bit down. So, I'll probably do a survey like I did last year and just ask the parents, like, what's going on. A lot of parents like to have their kids take the summer off. Special ed students work very hard during the school year, so parents feel like it's a reward to be able to just have fun and enjoy summer, and others feel very differently and say, "Nope, they need to be in school to keep up with their skills." And that's obviously what our goal is, but not all people feel that way. Let's see, Aspen, we transitioned to Aspen. We joined the district, let me say, in transitioning to Aspen on, in July 10th. So, the district has been, the Student Information Center has been Aspen for the year now. We, as special education department, just joined Aspen, and we're plugging along. We have a training coming up next week for all of our staff. I think everybody's a little bit anxious because change is hard, but we'll all get through it. It will be good once we all get acclimated, but that will be all well and good. And I think that's it. Because I forgot that I tied that into the beginning.
Awesome.
Questions for me?
Bule, any questions for Ms. Bule at this point?
I just have a quick one. I think the survey thing, absolutely, because you may be able to come up with a sort of a hybrid model. I don't think that's a bad word anymore in education. But you know what I mean? A model that works for the families that prefer to have their children home and totally get it, but they're maybe -- just food for thought because I've been on both sides of that fence.
And at the end of the day, we have to recommend it regardless. I mean, a parent could sit in a meeting and say, "I don't want Johnny to attend ESY," but we still have to recommend it because it's what's in the best interest, so.
Yeah. I want to thank Ashley for the work she's done and her team has done. You know, remember through budget process, people questioning Ashley and questioning numbers, you know, don't look at five don't look at 531, because we have 77 referrals, 77 evals. If half of those end up being accepted into special education, we're now talking at 570, and school year hasn't even started. So we're gonna be exactly where Ashley said we were gonna be. So I commend you.
Thank you.
Mr. Clark, you think salary is a problem with psychologists?
Uh, no. However, I do think that the workload is a lot. That's one of the first questions that psychs will ask when they come into interview, is how many evaluations am I gonna have to do? And we're looking at probably an average of 100 per psychologist. And that's insane. But again, we have to work with what we have, right? So I think that's one of the things. And one of the other things that we've stumbled upon is most school psychologists do a counseling and evaluation piece. I'm not sure what you do in your school, but that's, I think, a selling point for psychologists. They like to have that contact with the kids to run social skills group and therapy sessions. Where here, our psychologists only do testing, but our special education teachers do not. So I think that can throw a wrench in things too. Psychologists don't want to just be like administering tests, writing reports, analyzing results. So definitely things that I can think about coming into the future in the next year or two, as to how we might be able to change things up. But that's obviously a bigger conversation and involves many stakeholders, so.
Ms. Stone?
Thank you again for the amount of data that we're getting, right? We've been asking for a lot in prior years, and I think we're finally getting to where we need to be. Statement concerning numbers, but thankful we have you to keep an eye on that, so it's supposed to be reported. Just a question on, are we clear in our segregation of duties between grade-level paras and our special ed paras?
Yes. That is all set and ironed out. How the year plays out, however, I think some principals do their own thing at their own discretion, but we, I feel like we're walking into a very good place where we're all on the same page, that grade-level paras are grade-level paras, special education paras are special education paras. We have our program paras, our assigned paras, but we have everything listed out for all of the principals coming into the new year with para assignments and who's who and what their role is.
Do you think we need to start thinking about increasing the number of paras at GRAZE? Because we have grade level, and we have our special education paras in both buildings. And then they all of a sudden go up to GRAZE, and we don't have the same kind of numbers. So that's certainly something that we have to start thinking about.
Great. Last, but most certainly not least, Ms. Fleming.
I think we'd let Ms. Fleming go first, Nick.
It's the caboose, right? That's an important place on a train.
We should rotate it, I think.
It's fine. I agree with that. So I don't actually, I won't take too long, because I don't have some of the data that you're gonna be looking forward to next month as far as MCAS, because it's embargoed right now. So there's not a lot I can give out on that for the future. We'll have some information. But I am excited to say that our summer programming was definitely a success, jumpstart. We had 70 students. They were able to go through age-appropriate books. They had math fluency skills. And I added STEM this year for some hands-on and some collaboration. And it was a win. And the student surveys, we gave a little, like, written survey at the end, and I'm gonna say that 80% or more loved STEM, like, that was their thing, right? They got to do pollinators and make bubbles and learn about some science concepts through some hands-on activities. The teachers were wonderful. We had 14 staff. They're so positive, so energetic, and in the heat of the summer, they really just took on that task of keeping the kids moving and doing during three weeks of jumpstart. We had, I gave the numbers of each building there on our report, and one of the other additions that I had this year was, because we agreed to house it at GRAZE, it allowed me to work with Lisa, and more of our families were able to participate, because their kids went to Kids Cafe afterwards. So we had families that were like, "This is great. So we will continue that model moving forward." Some families dropped off at Kids Cafe at 7:30, and then we started at 8:00, and the Kids Cafe staff brought them over. They joined our group, and then we dropped them back off, and the parents had, you know, they were able to take their full day and be doing what they needed to do for their families. And we were able to have the kids quickly jump out with us for the program. So that was a wonderful win-win-win. There was some very solid curriculum work that happened this summer. It was exciting for me to work more closely with several groups of teachers. We did MCAS competency portfolios. Rather than be reactive, we went ahead and built out what a competency portfolio in math, ELA, and biology would look like, and what kind of assignments we would try to provide for our students to demonstrate their success. And so I worked with eight teachers on those, and Jeff Galant at the high school. And then we had all of our ELA teachers from Mr. Higgins' building working with me on their new ELA Amplify curriculum. And so we wrote scope and sequence documents, and they were able to dive into the platform and get even more excited than they were in the spring for this new transition. This year, I'll be starting the curriculum review cycle for science, technology, engineering, and digital literacy. Our science will, I'm not anticipating a lot of shifts or needs in our science curriculum. However, I do anticipate that our digital literacy and computer science will show some of our gaps, as that shows on our accountability data, that we really are only supplying access at the middle school for students, and we want to increase that access to the high school, leading up to the high school programs and the AP courses and so forth. So I will be putting a team together of stakeholders for that in September, and I'll be able to report on that as the year continues. Homeschooling has fluctuating numbers right now. Letters were sent out in June for progress, for their progress towards proficiency. I got most of those back. I have about 15 families that still haven't provided that piece, but they also haven't requested their homeschool ed plans for this year. And then I have about 12 other families now. But these are the numbers and the breakdowns are who's currently approved. I'll say that I got five today, so there's five new ones sitting on my desk, which would be families that were previously homeschooling last year, now turning in their ed plans. Renee and I, like, we just figure we'll see them all come in this week before the first day of school. But those reminders were sent out last week. Thank you, Renee, for helping with that.
You're welcome.
And we did have seven families re-enroll their students into the buildings, which was exciting. And I continually asked them, you know, if they're interested in that transition process back into schools. Many families are very happy with their homeschooling procedures and what they're getting to accomplish with their students, and many are looking for that ongoing, how do we, you know, support my child back into the buildings? So that's been exciting work, and I don't, we have three new families this year. So as this balances out, we'll be able to do a comparison more of how many new and how many returning we have. But I'll see, we'll see a big shift next report, because there's definitely more than 24 families now. The new staff start on Monday. It's super exciting. We have a lineup of people. You are all welcome to join us at 8 o'clock on Monday morning to be introduced and to see who our new staff are. I'm happy to provide you spotlight time, and or just shake hands and pick up Danish. But we have 25 new staff, and it's gonna be exciting to get them all rolling on Monday and Tuesday. We are doing a fun town scavenger hunt on, at the end of the day on Tuesday, with our administrators taking their new staff around to get pictures at the fire department and at the police station, or at certain streets and so forth. So that'll be a nice bonding experience for the administrators and their new staff as well.
Not only bonding, the idea of beginning to learn the town where our kids live is vitally important to understand who's coming into our classrooms. So we're excited about that.
The full-day training includes Aspen. ClassLink, we are shifting to that single sign-on. We're taking it in waves, though. So this year, there are a certain number of curriculum that a majority of people in the buildings use, so those will be brought on through ClassLink, which allows us to have the kids use a QR code for our younger kids and for our older kids to just sign on through their Google Classroom, access all of their curriculum apps in one location. So that's exciting as well. MCAS data, I already spoke to. The last page there just has grants information. I still haven't heard back on two of the grants that have been applied for the, sorry, the Computer Science Engage grant and the, oh, just one, I guess I haven't heard back on. The Computer Science Engage grant, I haven't heard back on yet, so. Our title grants, although Ashley saw a nice increase in her grants, I saw a decrease on our Title I, II, and IV. So we are down about, just under $36,000 on those grants, which typically fund some of our specialists, percentage of our specialists. And then it also provides for some professional development and paraprofessionals and so forth. So I'm working those numbers right now. In fact, I was working on it today most of the day.
Awesome. Salma, thank you so much. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Fleming? Ms. Rowan?
Want to share the wealth, sorry. So you're gonna have a breakdown of what would be, that 35K would represent, right?
Yes. Although, from year to year, we do shift what it's used for. They don't, in fact, Colleen, my rep, would probably, you know, give me a hard time if I just merely copied from year to year. So it does tend to go for different things. So for example, this year, I've worked in a lot of the curriculum work. Last year, I worked in a lot of the curriculum work. So there was a focus on literacy and math fluencies, and the ST math, you know, PD time and stipends for that. This year, there will be stipends, but it will be more toward digital literacy and the science reviews that are taking place. But I can give you that breakdown.
And then Mike, just a second question is, understand the great news on the homeschool. Are we still communicating to them as a part of the community, so that they know that they can participate in the after-school activities? They can participate in high school sports? They can do all of that aspect of it? I know for many years, that was a big miss, and they weren't involved in that communication?
I had one family tell me they've never had so much communication from the district. So, and I always end with, this is, we believe this is a collaborative process. Please reach out anytime. But on all my communication, it talks about their, you know, the potential for involvement. Ashley and I have been able to, like, smooth out the triangulation. Hey, the students, you know, this family mentioned speech services, you know, what can we do there?
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Fleming at this time? Great. Moving down to subcommittee updates. Regional Finance Committee, any updates there at this point? Things should be quiet.
No, but I'm expecting a budget calendar coming out very soon. That, we're gonna have to start that process, so we'll have to pick up on that.
Absolutely. Superintendent Evaluation Committee, we have been working away at Mr. Strauss's evaluation. We are probably about a week, week and a half from sitting down with him and just reviewing the feedback from the year and discussing what a successful year it has been. So excited to do that. Any Wellness and Health Committee updates?
No, we'll start the process again. First meeting will probably be in the end of September.
End of September, okay. And we do have to find a...
Who's sitting on that?
I think Mr. Clark had recommended that he sit on it.
I second.
But we can talk about that. We do have a reorg coming up. We're gonna reorg the school committee, subcommittees, in September. But I'll put a pin in that one, that Mr. Clark would love to be on the Wellness and Health Committee, because he's so healthy and well. D, Policy Subcommittee, any updates there at this point?
We do not have an update at this time.
No updates at this time. Capital Committee, I believe, you gave us our update.
Yeah, the big update, obviously, was tiers. I just want to reiterate that we're gonna be meeting now that this is going to be signed, and we actually have a B, we'll be bringing them in. I do want to add, and I'm very excited, that we are gonna be bringing in two students to sit on the committee, and that will become a continuous. These will be two students, in this case, who are seniors, who are very interested potentially in doing this career-wise, so I think it's a great opportunity. And then continue to bring in students every year. I think their voice is gonna be exceptional.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you for that. At this point, other business that may properly come before the meeting, do we have any?
I forgot that our GG, ST math, is starting, and our Leah Holmes, Sarah DiMaderos, both AES and FES principals, and myself are excited to bring our penguin friend into the building. So each of you have a penguin. Our students will be earning these as they make milestones on their new math support program that you saw last year with the puzzle talks and stuff. So you all earned your first penguin.
For our first penguin.
There we go.
Exciting.
And at this point, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a motion. I do have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
We'll pass unanimously.